Recording.
All right, we'll call a meeting to order at four oh one. Nathan, please lead the plea to send the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call of board members. Sigorsky?
Here.
Brockman?
Here.
Fandywater?
Here.
Kaplan's here and Russ Ross is in Florida. Absent. Um, approval of agenda. We have one item on the agenda under new business.
I move that we accept the agenda as stated.
Can I get support for that?
So moved.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Nay? None? So, uh, conflict of interest disclosure.
None.
We have one of those? No? Okay. Public comment on agenda item. I should lead. You guys are our bidders, so appreciate. If you want to use that during your three minute, that's fine, otherwise we'll just, we'll give you an opportunity to, to address the board regarding your quote, and I think we'll just flip a coin to see who goes first. Or I'll do it, I'll do it two and one. Does that seem reasonable?
I'll paper scissors.
All right.
There you go, it's probably better.
Do you, do you want, give any public comment?
Maybe just answer, answer questions after you guys talk about it? Is there?
Yeah, so public comment is just that you just can address the board. It's actually, uh, public comment on the agenda, so you would address the board with statements. We, it's not like a question and answer. But you'll be given time during the quote, so.
I'm, I'm good with sticking to that time.
Just thank you guys for the opportunity to have us here to provide these quotes for you today. We're excited to have the opportunity to do some business with you guys.
All right, thank you. Chris, any public comment?
All right, thank you. Um, new business, we're reviewing requests for quotes, uh, for IT services. We have two quotes. Introduce, um, Jake Griggs. Is your, there's a top, is it Griggs your last name?
Yep.
Okay. From, um, CCI.
CCI GuideStar out of Iron Mountain.
Perfect. And Josh Blumensad, New Business Solutions.
Endless Business Solutions.
Endless Business Solutions right here in Escanaba. All right, um.
I'll start with the board. You guys have any general questions up front before I turn it over to, two folks?
One question I had is regarding, um, Rachel had reached out back out to us and sent us, um, the, the record retention and backups. Yeah, the email that she just sent a little while ago.
Yeah, and that was just, that was just a device. I followed up with Rachel on that.
Okay.
That device, it was like a NAS device to do, basically, to do backup locally, right? That NAS?
Mm-hmm.
You saw that email, did you? Do you want to add anything to that?
Uh, well, I would just say that it's a-
It's part of our, uh, request for quotes. So it was incorporated into the re- request for quotes, that type of a service. Right. But the difference between doing it this way and doing it with a service provider is that it relies on the staff to do it. It, is it monitored by an IT professional? And it doesn't include hardware for like, like memory. Does that make sense?
It doesn't automatically, you don't have it in your system and it doesn't automatically back up like, say, every Friday or every, at, at four o'clock every day.
Nope, you have to do it.
It could if the-
Yeah.
Let me, you know what, let for-
If the employees did.
Depends on the application that's being used. You know, if you just have a hard drive in a, you know, PC and you don't have any application to manage the backup process, then you're manually moving files to that hard drive to create a backup. But with going with a service provider that offers a managed solution for that, then, you know, we would take over that process, ensure that the backups were facilitated when you guys wanted and make sure that happened regularly.
To piggyback that, uh, in my quote, there was one of those devices. And so, uh, we follow something called the three, two, one backup method. You have three copies on at least two different devices and then one of them is offsite. So essentially, in the quote that I put together, um, there's licensing for the automation of that backup and the alerts. So every day, basically, it's called a grandfather, father, son backup. Every month, complete backup. Every week, differential backup. And then, uh, every night, a incremental backup was ran, would be ran on that in an automated fashion. And then it alerts us and says, hey, it went successful or something's wrong. And then in the backup as a service, uh, that I quoted is a complete management of all that. So if something goes wrong, hardware failure or backup doesn't run, it's on us to investigate and fix all covered in that, uh, I think that line item was like a hundred bucks a month. And it also includes the upfront cost of, um-
You know about, about that?
Yeah.
Okay.
So one thing I wanted to comment on, and I did state this in my email over to you, Joe, is after digging into the NIST, the new NIST compliance requirements, which for those of you guys that aren't aware, NIST is a framework that denotates what type of security and compliance requirements you must adhere to as a government body. And that stipulates that you actually cannot use an onsite NAS device for your backups. Government bodies are required to have their backups go to the cloud. And that's for what's referred to as business continuity or disaster recovery reasons. Essentially, if you have a local backup onsite and there was a cybersecurity incident that prevents you from coming into this office to use the network, right? All of those files are then inaccessible unless they are stored, you know, like he said, local and, and the cloud as well. So NIST requires that government bodies, their backups exist in the cloud.
And you, and you both provided that in your quote.
Yeah. My quote doesn't provide for a NAS device because I couldn't find anything in the NIST requirements that states you can do both. It stipulates that backups have to go to the cloud. I didn't find anything that said you couldn't also have a local storage or a local backup, just that it requires your backups go to the cloud.
And to piggyback, that same framework, NIST is, uh, it's put together by the Department of Commerce, United States government kind of thing and, and following same guidelines here. But yeah, the device that was in, just shown to me was IOSafe, which is a brand out of California. They basically, one of the brands that I put into my quote is Synology. So this brand out of California takes, they bake, build their own hardware and then they use Synology operating systems underneath it. And so, you know, it said fireproof and water resistant and it's just, the specs was, uh, I think fifteen hundred degrees Fahrenheit for thirty minutes and house fires like two thousand degrees Fahrenheit. So you can't put your trust in something onsite. Again, you have to have that continuity of an offsite backup. In the event of a disaster, disaster recovery is kind of the, um, the area where, what we're talking about. So in the event of a disaster, no matter what, um, you have copies, uh, encrypted copies in the cloud somewhere in a, uh, you know, cloud storage solution.
What would be the benefit of having both? If you went with the cloud, why would you need to do the other ones?
Local's faster.
Yeah.
Typically. File transfer is a little bit faster if you're not using a cloud service. But if you're backing up to the cloud like at two in the morning, it doesn't matter.
Faster and then, uh, if your internet service goes out, you're dead in the water. You can't access things in the cloud. There's got to be, um, even cloud computing, you know, edge, edge servers and stuff. Like you want the, um, the quickness, the latency of onsite, but then you also want the benefit of having the offsite. So, uh, that's where in the quote, it, it goes to an onsite device. That's the primary thing. And then there's a third backup, uh, in the cloud for absolute disaster. The place burns down. Um, the quote I provided is enough to get you guys running in that scenario. Like the whole building burns down, you guys have all your data still. And you're, you're not affected necessarily with internet service. And so, and also I put, you know, battery backups and things like that. So like the power could go out, the internet could go out and these backup services are still running in the system that I put together for you guys.
You, you guys are on the same page with this?
I mean, he's not wrong.
Okay, good, yeah.
But it's more of a, the only reason I didn't provide a onsite NAS device is one, I don't know if it's compliant per NIST two point out, which just, was just released to the public for public comment this past November.
Okay.
So without knowing for sure if that local NAS device would pass that NIST compliance, I just didn't want to bake in any potential cost for it.
Okay.
If it's something that can be done, that's always something that could just get reinserted into the environment down the line if it's determined that that is compliant, having a local device in addition to the cloud storage.
And just so you know, we didn't, we don't, we, you know, we're a local unit of government organized under the Michigan Department of Agriculture. So this, uh, so we don't really have any guidance. It's really up to us to determine what our, what our IT standards are. I mean, I, I like the fact, you know, you both addressed NIST because we, you know, the department of, Michigan Department of Ag just, just approved a new record retention policy. So like seven years of email.
So you talked to her about this and things they want to do are compliant with?
Oh, no, I didn't talk about the quotes.
No, no, no. Did you talk to Rachel about the retention policy then that they're implementing? Is it, are we going to comply with?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I mean, we just got to make sure we don't delete our data.
No, I, I understand that.
Okay.
I just asked, did you, you said you talked to Rachel, did you ask her about any of it?
That hasn't, that, that's not addressed. See, that's, the policy is you need to retain grants, you know, for a certain length of time, pass the grant plus three years. Emails, you know, seven years. So each, each public record gets put into its own class and then it's up, there's a, there's a standard, there's an approval schedule that after, you know, X amount of time, you can delete that record. Now, as a, as a, as a organization or as a, as a unit, we can make decisions saying, you know, we're, we're going to store this material indefinitely. But we just have to follow the policies. It doesn't-
That's why I asked you.
Yeah, so the state didn't give us guidance that we have to be, oh, I'm sorry.
NIST compliant.
Yeah, they didn't say anything about being NIST compliant.
I don't remember, I went through the whole thing, but I don't remember what they said.
And, and certainly, the, the situation that we're inheriting now, and, you know, we, we didn't, we didn't have back, I mean, you know, the-
I understand that.
Totally was outside of our realm of doing it. So we, you know, we've, our requ- our request for quotes wanted this type of approach, right? Where we had cloud backup in case something happened internally and monitoring and that sort of thing.
I guess that was my question. So they didn't really, uh, I don't recall. I never made, they handed it to all the things. Where they, there's no speci- they didn't have any specifications as to how they wanted it. Retent, retention, just that there's retention of these various, you know.
Right.
Or, and I, I did remember the place, you know, we can get to a point where we decide we don't want certain things and we get rid of them and. Yeah, there were some things, I remember like-
I guess.
If I, if I write you notes and I'm going to meet you for lunch.
I should probably talk about this, right?
Well, yeah, I was just going to comment on the retention schedule. Um, you know, I've gone through, uh, retention schedule acceptance, uh, through the state with the college. Uh, when I started there, we did not have a retention schedule. And it's, it's, it's quite a lengthy process, uh, you know, to, to get completed. But at this point, the, uh, Michigan Department of Agriculture has developed a retention policy, which then means it goes to all the conservation districts. You have to review it and if you have modifications to it, you can make modifications based on your local organization's needs. And then that gets submitted to the state and the state approves it or doesn't approve it, depending on what your, uh, suggestions you're making or changes that you're making. And then once you have a, um, a, an approved retention schedule with the state, that becomes your backup, um, uh, schedule for, until it's modified again.
A little more comment. Just the, I guess the difference, a, a quote that doesn't have the NAS and a quote that has the NAS and same compliance. So I think that the compliance is not that you can't have a onsite backup. It's that your onsite, it's that you also need a cloud backup. But your onsite backup does have to follow, um, you know, the principle of least privilege, have proper, you know, authentication, authorization and accounting, you know, proving who you say you are to get the data and, and what data you get access to, that kind of stuff. So it still has to meet compliance within the NIST. But I don't think it necessarily, you're always going to have local backups, right? You're always going to have a copy on your, on your desktop and then you make, you know, so everything's, uh, it's going to be local to some extent, but I think it just means that you also need in addition a cloud, um, solution, which, you know, um, is in both the quotes at this point, um, for the, the cloud based solution.
I, I wonder if this would be, do you have any other questions in general?
And I will fill this out for you as you go. You do have to put this on record. Um, so when you have asked for quotes, you have to record who has responded, uh, and then what the quote is, uh, from the response and then does it meet all of the requirements? So that's a requirement for us to keep this on record as a conservation district. So if you, i- if that's okay, we can just do that real quick and then-
Happy to go through.
Does that sound, yeah?
Yeah, we can go through one at a time and just go through each one of the line items and everything.
Do a number?
You guys, you guys, um, take care of it and I'm just going to record as you go, so.
All right. I got a number one or two behind my back.
You should probably use like a coin or something because you could change that number.
I'm not going to change it.
So you can either write it down on a piece of paper.
Where's the coin?
Or flip a coin.
This is all, this is all new for me. I've never experienced anyone doing it together.
Yeah.
In all the things I've done.
Got a coin?
So this is different for me, so.
Well, from my perspective, the whole goal of this is that your guys' business and environment is secure.
Yes.
Right? From my perspective, as long as that happens, I should be a lot happier if it was my company, obviously. But the, the objective, the goal is that you guys get the security and compliance requirements that you need to make sure you maintain your operations moving forward.
All right. Who wants to pick a number one or two?
I'll go two.
All right.
Oh, I got it?
You can choose to go first or defer?
Oh, I'll go first. I always like to take the lead.
Okay, so company name?
GuideStar, a division of CCI Systems.
Okay. And location?
One oh five Kent Street in Iron Mountain, Michigan.
Okay. And company name, you're Jacob Griggs?
Yep, I'm Jacob Griggs.
Perfect. And your phone number?
Nine zero six two eight two nine eight five eight.
Thank you.
No problem. So thanks so much for having us today, guys. Again, it was really nice to come down and speak with you, Joe and Chris, on Wednesday and talk about your guys' environment and what your guys' needs are. So your guys' request for quote was very specific. It requested NAS, network as a service. It requested Office three sixty, or, uh, OS backups and, uh, patching and making sure that all the updates are in place. You requested vulnerability management. And then you requested file sharing and backup services. So to cover that first, relating to your guys' network as a service. So I know, Joe, I kind of talked a little bit on Wednesday when I was out about the next gen Fortinet firewalls that we're using over at GuideStar. So that is an AI-driven next gen firewall. And essentially what that means is that in the days of the past, your SOC, your Security Operations Center would constantly have to be watching for vulnerabilities as they're attempting to penetrate your network and environment. And then they would have to proactively go out and get patches or find fixes in order to ensure that those vulnerabilities were closed in the future. These next gen firewalls do that automatically. So if a prospective threat enters the environment or makes an attempt to do so, that firewall is going to reach out to their cloud and they're going to say, hey, I saw this. What do you have to help me protect against it? And then it's going to automatically patch itself and it's going to make sure that that vulnerability is not a possibility in the future as well. Now, the benefit with using that type of a technology is that it's very low touch. There's obviously not a lot of work that's needed to be done there from a management perspective, from your guys' end or from us as a service provider's end, which helps keep, one, the number of times that, you know, you guys have to be bothered with us down to a minimum. And two, it helps drive down the cost of that monthly support because we don't have to touch the environment as much to make sure that you guys are staying secure. So that covers the NAS service. That would be one twenty-five monthly. That is broken down in the agreement in the post pricing page. So then next would be the twenty-four seven support patching. That would be covered under our IT and user support. So this stuff is kind of near and dear to me because I've formerly managed our twenty-four seven contact center and Network Operations Center. Our guys are industry certified. We get them their A plus, Net plus, Security plus certifications right away when they get into our security center. And then we really get them spun up on the types of technologies that we use out in the field, prep them for field work for future roles as engineers. So that contact center is staffed twenty-four seven. If there's ever a time that you have an issue, you will call and you will get a Midwestern accent telling you, hey there, eh, how can I help you fix your issue? So that would cover your guys' twenty-four seven monitoring and user support and patching. Next up is the file sharing and backup services. So the file sharing, I, currently I would expect that you guys essentially have a local drive maybe that is mapped out and you guys are using for access. Or if not, that is the typical approach I would expect most people are taking. So the thing that we'd like to recommend in that case is a swap from a local storage device over to SharePoint. Now, we use SharePoint, many of the other companies that we have use SharePoint. And the best part about SharePoint is that it's all in the cloud. It's accessible from wherever you are. So whether or not you're doing work here at the office or you need to go home and do some work, maybe you're feeling under the weather or something's happened to the building, you're doing some renovations, all your files are easily accessible from anywhere you are, anywhere that has that access.
So that, that would be covered like remote working?
So that is covered under the software line, under the proposed pricing.
I'm getting ahead of myself, thanks.
No, no, you're fine. That's twelve ninety-five per user, per month, for a total cost of thirty-eight eighty-five per month. And then the last thing would be the backups. So we use what's called Ninja for our remote management and monitoring tool. And we would use Ninja for your guys' backup services. That's a very low cost option. That's only twelve fifty per, uh, device that would need to be backed up there. So originally, I was under the intention that you guys have a single device where those things are all being stored currently, which I think is that Think Center device that's sitting over there in your guys' environment. So if that was the case and everything's stored there currently, that'd be very easy to just take that and back it up to the cloud. But if you guys wanted to expand that to the individual workstations, it's just an additional twelve fifty per month per workstation. And then what that does is one terabyte of cloud storage per device and it's essentially a pool. So if you have four devices, right, that you're using for these backup storage and one of them is using two fifty, one of them is using two fifty and the others are using five hundred each, that goes to that collective pool and they're only using, you know, two point five out of the potential four that you have, if you have four devices. So it's, it gives you a lot of flexibility because then you don't have to worry about, am I fully utilizing the full capability of what I can back up on a per device basis? It'll just pool it all together and make sure that you're getting fully what you're utilizing. So that is a three-year agreement that I proposed there for you guys. So that essentially comes out to a monthly cost of three seventy-one thirty-five for all services included.
You got all that, Mike?
Yep. Paying attention.
Good. I feel like we're apes lost in the woods. You're probably used to that.
No, you guys are fine.
All right, good, no, we're, we're active listeners.
So what questions do you guys have? What can I answer for you guys about that? I tried to make sure that, and I mentioned this on Wednesday when I was out, Joe and Chris, my whole perspective as somebody who has never really been a salesman is that I don't want to give you guys something that you don't absolutely need to cover what you're asking for. So this quote is very, I don't want to say simplistic, but it's very Spartan. It covers exactly what you guys are asking for while making sure that there's flexibility down the road in your guys' budget. If you ever want to do things like upgrade your equipment to a newer model, maybe that net gear switch that's in there is getting a little close to end of life and at some point you guys want to consider replacing that, you know, that gives you that guy's flexibility.
Okay. So, so this is a thirty-six month commitment, right?
Yes, sir.
Three seventy-one month. And then what, what happens at the end of that thirty-six months?
So before we got to the end of that commitment, we would reengage you guys. Our typical procedure is within three to six months of the end of the agreement, we would reengage in order to negotiate an extension.
Okay.
Or a renewal.
Okay.
And at any point, you know, if you guys are interested in changing the nature of the agreement or adding on additional services or anything, that is of course more than fine. That's all covered under the change in scope of work on page two at the bottom.
So I, I, uh, again, I'm not an IT person, uh, but I am a minimalist. And so the question is what, I guess you've answered, what, is this the minimum what we need to, cover our retention, cover our ability to get at our stuff and have backup? I mean.
Yep, so from my perspective, this is what I would call a very Spartan deal, right? It covers exactly what you guys need without adding any frills, bells or whistles right off the bat. My perspective is you guys have a need for your environment to be secure, accessible, and you need to have a plan for the, in the event that there is ever a disaster or something that prevents you from getting your job done. This agreement covers all of those points and provides you the flexibility to change or add things on down the line if you ever determine you want to.
Is this something that you folks do normally, thirty-six months, minimal?
Oh, yeah. That's, that's our typical, yes. We want to give you guys a three-year agreement because that gives you guys enough time to make sure that you're satisfied with our services. You know, one thing, wi- with having a one-year agreement, if you guys get six months down the line, right, and you say, well, we have problems, right, and we're not interested in solving them, for whatever reason, right? That doesn't really give you guys a whole lot of time to get the plan together to go to a different provider or what have you. So from our perspective, a three-year agreement not only helps keep the price low because the prices of equipment and services and things and licensing that, you know, go up all the time. So getting you guys into a three-year agreement keeps your guys' costs down while giving you guys flexibility to keep options open.
I, I mean, to be, I mean, totally honest with you, being able to evaluate is, is not going to be my thing. I, I, I don't, I'm not going to be able to tell whether your service is, you know, living up to what it's supposed to live up to.
Yeah.
To be honest with you. So I'm not sure where, how we would, uh, how do we do an evaluation? How do we know if there's a, uh,
So what-
A glitch in that system that for some reason?
So what we do to help you guys in that process is for all of our customers, what we like to do is deliver what's called a monthly work summary. So essentially, when we would send out your guys' invoice, you would also get a document that encapsulated, here are the total number of support tickets that were opened up this month. Here's what they were for. Here are the things we patched in your environment this month. Here are the number of intrusions that we prevented for you this month. That shows you guys, I am getting value from this agreement that I signed. And then if you guys have questions, that provides a very easy opportunity for you to look over that and say, wow, we had ten attempts at intrusions this month and we've averaged one for the last five months. What happened? You know, did someone attempt to hack us? Well, yeah, and we prevented that and here's exactly what happened and what we did to make sure your network is secure. We also do quarterly business reviews. So every fiscal quarter, we would like to have, you know, maybe a thirty, sixty minute meeting with you guys just to talk about the services that we're providing, make sure that any questions that you guys have are being answered. You know, maybe there's, maybe you guys are interested in installing cameras. You know what I mean? And you want to talk about what that would look like from a pricing perspective. Or maybe you guys need a new vote, a phone system. You know, we do FOIP solutions as well. You know, maybe that's something you guys want to talk about down the line, so.
Hal, uh, this is a general question. Two of these computers are, are on federal, on the federal server.
They're completely separate.
Totally separate.
They have nothing to do with the system.
There's no, there's no, there's no overlap.
No cross.
There's no tying.
No crossing at all. That's important. And I, you both asked that question.
Yeah. Yeah, that's a compliance thing.
Yeah, yeah, it, it, stay off, stay off the-
So, so we're, we're relying on their, their system that, uh, do the same thing.
Mm-hmm.
Exactly.
It's being backed up, yeah.
And they definitely have these things in place.
Do, do they have them in place?
Yeah.
I haven't seen anything, but yes. I hope, yeah, if somebody's doing the job, yes.
Well, I mean, it's critical.
Yeah, yeah.
If it wasn't, then.
Well, yeah. Your business, your business depends on it. Yeah, it's, it's not twenty years ago. Cyber threats are very, very real.
Yeah. No, I, I'm not, I don't have a question, I just want to make sure that they're, they're backing up and doing all the stuff similar, similar vein.
And, and we, I don't know the details, but I remember they were talking about the, that, that we had a, some virus in a computer, so. Anyhow, is that, should we move along?
I have, I have a question though. Um, if we know that everyone's costs go up, how are we going to address that when, uh, software patches, or not patches, but when the software upgrades, uh, the cost for those go up? Are they absorbed or- Uh, the cost for those go up, are they absorbed or?
Oh, yeah, so locking you guys into a three-year agreement means your guys' prices don't change over the course of that three-year agreement, right? It's not like I'm gonna come to you guys six months from now and say, oh, man, you know. The price of our Ninja tool went up, and I got past that a lot. No, that's not gonna happen. You know, at the end of our thirty-six month agreement, our typical increase on a renewal is, you know, three percent. Maybe three to five percent depending on if there's a big, big change in one of the tools that we use or something of that nature. But in general, our goal is to provide you guys exactly what you need without costing you an arm and a leg. We know that for most businesses, their IT budget is, you know, not exactly the lion's share of their budget. So we wanna make sure that we fit well within what your guys' budget is, so. I know I'm using flexibility, it's like my hot-button word today, but again, giving you guys the capacity to use that for other purposes if you need it.
Okay. And we have a, a three-year contract with you, and I'm reading in here, it's, there's a ninety-day notice required for termination.
Oh, yeah, correct. So like, in the event that, say, for example, we got six months down the road in, in the relationship. And for whatever reason, you guys were just unhappy with the service we're providing, right? All that takes is a quick email over, hey, just so you know, we'd like to exercise our ninety-day termination. This is our notice to you. In ninety days, you know, at such and such date would be the last day of service or what have you.
And what's the updatable hardware that you would supply us?
So the only hardware that, I mean, just based on your guys' environment that I was taking a look at, and I don't know how old those laptops are by any means. The printers both look fine. The only thing I was somewhat interested in checking out was that Netgear switch that you guys have on that table. As well as that Think Center PC. Just cuz I wanna see if they're getting close to end of life or end of support. If that's the case. It's best practice to get it swapped out before it's considered end of life. Cuz that means if something happened and we reached out to Netgear, they would say, uh, we don't care about that. So you need to buy something new.
So that would be on us or that would be supplied by you?
We would provide, we would provide you a quote of what the cost would be. And if we determined that that was something you wanted to do, we could proceed with that. I looked into it and the switch isn't end of life at this point. So that would just be a conversation down the road, like if it became end of life in a year or two, you know what I mean? We might wanna proactively get that swapped for you. Which of course would be a discussion. We would provide the quote, hey, here's what we would consider the cost of the replacement switch to be. What are your guys' thoughts on that? It's not that you can't use it if it's end of life, it's that if we reached out to Netgear. For support for that switch, they wouldn't provide support for us. They would tell us that's end of life, you need to purchase a newer piece.
And we'd have to replace it.
Yeah. Having said that, it seems like it's chugging along just fine, and it's not end of life currently, so I don't think that's any kind of immediate concern.
Am I right?
Anybody else?
No more.
Thank you very much. That was, yeah.
Absolutely.
Should upload this as a training video for other.
So I certainly don't want to repeat a bunch of techie lady redundancy in, in this response. So maybe I'll pinpoint a few differences in, in the uh, the two quotes. Uh, one of them, I'll start at the top with the networks and sets the forefront, you know, it's interfacing with the world. Um, one of the differences, we talked about the Netgear switches and stuff, my quote is a replacement of everything. And so it's all new included in my price. Uh, one of the differences with the, you know, your, your firewall that's interfacing with the world is your, the first point of contact. For the world, right? And so uh, one of the differences is my quote provides not only the intrusion detection and prevention. But also something called deep packet inspection. And I always describe it something like this, like if you're, um, let's say you're at a jail and you have your inmates. And you have people that wanna send packages inside the jail, right? It's highly secure, right? So they take those uh, packages and they inspect them. And then after they've proven that there's no malicious things in them, they pass them on, right? And so um, one of the things that we have in, in our equipment at the security appliance is deep packet inspection. So real-time, it can intercept internet traffic, open it up, look for malicious things, pack it back up and send it in. So that's one huge difference that it's kind of a, a different level of, of takes higher processing power inside the equipment. I think that's gonna be kind of a standout item as far as um, not only just the intrusion detection. And it also has um, you know, geo-locking. I can say, okay, Russia is not allowed to contact our network. Or China, and you can geo-lock this thing. There is honey pots inside the network where if you do get something inside the network, tries to run a malicious. I call it recon, reconnaissance, a scan to see on your, what's on your network. Uh, we get flagged and get alerted kinda thing and can act on it. Um, also, the networking equipment is piggybacked on a nine-hundred watt UPS. Which is uninterruptible power supply. So it not only does battery backup, it does power conditioning and surge suppression. Um, so like in the event of the power goes out while our backups are running. Uh, the backup device and all the network gear is plugged into a battery backup that could carry that network for. Forty-five minutes to an hour and a half depending on the load that it's taking at that time. That's what it's budgeted for at least. Um, so in addition to the firewall, um, we put in, we quoted one that has the capability of replacing that switch as well. And then also we, in our pricing, is a separate wireless unit that would sit on, on the ceiling. And so there, you know, all those units are, are collectively inside the network as a service quote. Um, moving on to the backup, uh, one big difference there is in my quote is that NAS. Is the NAS with two fourteen-terabyte enterprise drives. That's going to uh, be certainly enough for now and have room for expansion. It's gonna be enough for the central uh, storage for, you guys wanted a central spot for all your stuff to go. Um, and then obviously the, the three computers would have image level backups um, uh, every month. Differential backups every week and then incremental backups, all in an alerted automated fashion. Uh, that both we would be monitoring and the users can also get alerts for. Uh, at the network level, at the backup level and at the endpoint level of the devices. Um, so I didn't, I didn't manage, I didn't mention this on the network side, but we also pay for third-party service to monitor your network from the outside. As well. And so within one second, if, if one simple ping is lost, uh, we get alerted and can act on it kinda thing. And so those, uh, we also offer you guys a public status page that you guys can go to website and see green light, red light. You know, is it working or is it not working kinda thing? Um, so, network side, the backups, again, the backups has redundancy onsite with the NAS. Um, not only just the, the implement, the hardware, but the implementation and following best practice when it comes time to. You know, having one device that has open access to everybody, you're still vulnerable of ransomware attacks and things like that. So we basically um, isolate things in the storage area that, so if an attack were to happen, we can restore it. It wouldn't impact everything. Um, and then obviously the NAS would back up to a cloud. Um, we use uh, one of two cloud solutions, uh, Synology has a built-in uh, native cloud storage. Um, we also use one called Wasabi, which is um, American brand. And, and they have two data centers in Virginia that you would generally use in the United States. Um, but they, all, everything here is like encrypted with um, at this point, two fifty-six bit encryption. And so it's also encrypted uh, before it hits the hard drive in the cloud. So not just, they call it, you know, when data's in a standstill in the cloud, it's always encrypted. But even transfers and stuff like that can, are encrypted as well. Um, moving down to the endpoints, um, I quoted out three items. Uh, one was uh, just screen connect. It allows us to remotely connect to you guys, offer support. Um, does some, some things we could do remotely without actually connecting to your screen. And then for the endpoint protection and the vulnerability, patch management, we use uh, malware bytes. So malware bytes has in their endpoint protection, uh, detection and response. Uh, one of the differences is we outsource the, the security operations center. So Malwarebytes has a team that have, you can't get a job in their security operations center unless you have fifteen years of industry cybersecurity experience. So they have thirty employees. So we take that heavy handling that you're not gonna find those people in the UP. And we outsource to a company that's well-versed in their twenty years' experience, uh, they've been around since two thousand eight. And so we outsource that, but that is included in the uh, endpoint detection and response. And then the vulnerability assessment is a way for us, the end-users typically are, if they see an update. What is everybody gonna do? They're gonna hit remind me later or hit the X, right? So it allows us to manage that for you, so the end-users don't have to worry about, oh, I need to restart my computer and do updates. We understand the typical behavior of an end-user and um, we want to do that for you. And that's just that line item, four bucks a month per computer. So very reasonable for us, you know, and, and so on our dashboard, we have high priority, medium priority, low priority, and we act. And there are times where we have to contact you and say, hey, you know, this computer's been off for three days, can you just turn it on so we can, so we can push these updates kinda thing? Um, so yeah, that's, Malwarebytes is our endpoint detection and response and our vulnerability assessment and management. Um, so at all three levels, the network level, the backup level and the workstation level, it's not just us. Some people don't want the alerts, but we have the ability to like, if you guys all wanted alerts for all the computers on, you know. Uh, things that were blocked and, and the backups that were failed or successful or whatever, um, we offer that to the customer. Um, no additional charge, it's just baked into the system that's already there. So the transparency is kinda there for not just us, but the end-user. And it helps to, you know, a lot of times we're kinda the uh, as Mitnik, the ghost in the wire kinda thing. Nobody sees us, we're on the backend and, but we're still actively working and, and doing routine updates. Um, one of the things with updates, I'll piggyback on um, the AI and the automation is. Typically, you get a major release in a backup, and the best practice in IT is to not install that update right away, if it's a major release. So you always wait until the, the bugs are worked out. So if you get an update fourteen point zero, point zero, point zero. It gets pushed uh, in a general automatic uh, you know, updating operation. But we typically, uh, we have the same equipment in a test environment. We test it. We wait for security, you know, release notes of what could be wrong with it, are there any bugs? And then we wait to push an update until we know it's not gonna uh, negatively impact you guys as a business running. Um, I don't know if that clarified differences or I just uh, repeated a lot of stuff there. But um, yeah, so the difference is gonna be, you know, a different level of security appliance that can do deep packet inspection. Uh, the backup as a service includes the onsite, you know, we're talking like fifteen hundred dollars extra for this onsite device. That um, not only are we providing, but we're warranting it. And so if a hard drive dies, if the whole thing dies, it's coming out of, you guys are covered under your contract and we come and replace that. At no additional, additional charge either for the device or hourly uh, time that it takes to, to, to fix it.
Okay, so real quick, uh.
Yeah, good.
Endless Business Solutions, what's the address?
Uh, twenty-five fourteen Lake Shore Drive.
Okay, and phone number?
Nine zero six, two two one, nine two five eight. That would be my cell at least.
And then what is the um, again, three-year?
So I didn't include a contract uh, wording, but basically we do, the network and the backup is a sixty-month contract. In the contract is verbiage that after uh, three years, uh, you can opt out of the contract at no penalty. So there is that, and the, the reason for the five-year, sixty-month is because the manufacturers warranty their equipment for five years. And it's a, also a good refresh cycle. So that's why we put sixty months in there, generally in the hopes that we maintain a, you know. A good working relationship and you wanna re-up. And so it basically drives a refresh cycle of every five years, we put new equipment in your place. At no cha, at no extra charge, um, under that contract. So if we were to come re-up, it's gonna be that same price. And I would like to point out that our initial um, contract fees are including the initial installation in that numbers. So at the end of that five years, there's a very good chance that your contract numbers would go down. Because there's no more installation, uh, we didn't have to terminate any wires, we didn't have to put a network rack on the wall. Um, so there's a good chance that your numbers will actually decrease. Uh, with the only exception there is going to be your, you know, licensing stuff, right? Things that we don't have any control over, sometimes they go up. Uh, and in a five-year period, you can almost say for certain that they're gonna go up somewhat, right? Um, but overall, I think at the first re-up, it would either go down or be a wash. Uh, I can't, it's hard to say what happens in five years, but um.
Are you gonna supply us with notifications of what's, you know, if there's been issues such as they are?
Absolutely. So that's, I, um, quarterly, for sure, I do quarterly. Um, I think it says in there quarterly. Uh, weekly security audits above and beyond just alert uh, monitoring. And then, um, yeah, anybody that wants to be on it, that's authorized to be on it, um, can get on, it's just a mailing list. And so I put in a, a mailing list address and whoever's on that side can get alerts for every second that. Right now, it's uh, spectrum. If they went down, you could get an alert, um. And so any, any intrusions, any uh, you know, failed backups.
Our district manager be getting these as well as when this three-year date comes up, if they wanna evaluate. So they, kind of a tickler to them.
Oh, you're saying with the three-year?
Yeah.
Um.
Because it, it, none of us could be here in five years, so.
I gotcha. Um, yeah, and hopefully, um, one of the things that is included here is documentation. So um, you know, what you have, the end-service dates, this is all shared documentation within the systems that we provide. So it's not just blind to the user. I, I wholeheartedly agree that the end-user or you guys should see. Uh, the details of anything that's not uh, sensitive information that a malicious actor could utilize. Uh, but yeah, contracts and even, you know, um, inventory of things and, and all that stuff is definitely in a shared location.
And what is the monthly cost? What was the?
I think it was three seventeen sixty-nine?
Three twelve.
Three twelve, sorry.
What is it again?
Three twelve sixty-nine.
Okay.
He tried.
I should have probably.
It's okay. Um, wow. Thank you both. Do we have the, both of that filled out?
I do, I have it filled out. And the only other thing, I, it, I, I mean, I don't know where you are with questions, cuz you may have more questions.
Yeah.
But when you're done with questions, then.
On, on your quote, um, you don't have the onsite uh, backup, correct?
Correct. And that's because I couldn't verify it under NIST two point O.
And that would be, that would be an extra charge which would accumulate. Do you have an idea of what that, what a, what an actually, extra monthly charge that would be?
To, there would be no additional monthly charge for the NAS. It would just be whatever the cost would be of the NAS device we wanted to put in, basically.
Okay, so that would be.
That would be a one-time charge.
Just ballpark figure, what do they, what does something like that run?
It really depends on the storage that you're using. So for you guys with an estimated five terabytes worth. I'd have to go double-check, but I mean, hard drives in general, they're not terribly expensive. It's what you're putting them in, right? So like if you needed to build a small server to use. It's not terribly expensive, maybe around a grand, two grand, depending on the size of the server that would be needed. But it, it really depends based on the storage capacity.
What's the life of that?
Oh, like, if you're getting, it's five plus years, like, they last for a long time. Unless you're buying a very old used one off of Amazon or something like that.
Can I, can I piggyback that? One of the, one of the things that in the backup as a service. You, yeah, you can go out and one, buy a one-time fee, right? But these are computers that also have security vulnerabilities. They also need patches, they also need upgrades. And so one of the advantages to using our solution is we're doing that for you. We're not just giving you a one-time thing and then, hey, say, okay, if it's vulnerable, who knows? So we're monitoring all that, we're patching it, we're making sure. Network area storage devices have vulnerabilities just like any other computer, just like any other uh, network equipment. So it's also something that needs an IT professional that is monitoring these things on a, on a routine basis. To know that the vulnerabilities are there, um, to patch them, especially when it's housing all of your records, right?
I gotta, cuz I've kinda got lost. Why do we need this NAS thing? Since, since it's backed up some other place and in the club, and my, it sounds like the physicality of it, it's not protected. I mean, if you had a fire, it's gone, or if someone came in and stole it, it's gone. I mean, I, I, and I'm coming. I mean, I, I, and I'm coming, she knows this from a long time ago, we backed up every night, we, we took it home.
Right.
Got it off the site and, so I, but I don't, I don't, that was before cloud.
I hear you. So I guess two things, first thing that comes to mind is the backup I just perform, you know, otherwise you end up with eight flash drives in, in a random desk drawer and you, and you don't know where your data is and it's, it's, you know, so that's one. The second one is, you know, basically you wanna follow the three-two-one backup method. So it's three copies on at least two different devices and one of them's offsite, right? And so it's, while not, it doesn't have that exact wording in the NIST compliance, but along the same lines of that's what's happening in the compliance, that's what they suggest. And so, you know, the cloud, I guess the disadvantage to just working in the cloud is, you know, it's not as quick. So you're gonna have to download something if you wanna use the, the standard Word program, you're downloading a Word document. You gotta download it, work on it, this is just, you can open it right on the file share and then it syncs to the cloud after the fact. And, you know, whenever you're restoring, so in my, and one of, another difference I, I guess here is, you said you use a Ninja for the backups there?
Yep.
So you, you're still looking for a central location to store your devices. And at this point, I don't know if SharePoint was gonna be that for, for a central location for all the users. They want one spot in the, in the request for quotes was, we want one spot to store all of our documents.
Yeah, file sharing.
File sharing.
That's the purpose of SharePoint.
Okay.
Unlimited storage, accessible anywhere, I mean, it's the only, there's really no difference to utilizing SharePoint versus using a shared drive or a NAS that's local to the environment, except for that, to access the NAS remotely, you need rules set up within your network that allows you to do that, right? Whereas SharePoint, you can, not saying one is necessarily better than the other, there are advantages to having an onsite device. You know, there is a physical device you can put your hands on, you know, if there's a Microsoft outage or is your ability to access the files on your SharePoint compromised? Not in all cases. I, in the entire time my company has used SharePoint, we've had one hour-long period where we were unable to access our files on SharePoint. And we've been using it for like five years. So like, is that possible? Yes, the chance is infinitesimal.
This might be a naive question to jump in here, but if someone's, someone broke in here and stole that NAS, is that automatically relayed back to, so everything is blocked somehow or?
Encrypted.
Encri- it's, it's all encrypted automatically, even it's encrypted in there as well.
Correct, so.
Okay.
Yep, and so I think that BitLocker is used on the computers. So if somebody steals laptop encryption, encryption on the NAS, it has within Synology's software has encryption and then also in the cloud has encryption in the cloud.
But you, you, you guys, both your systems would know that if that thing is, someone broke in here and stole it.
So the monitoring that we'd have set up, so we would have an additional computer, basically, that is used in-house to manage the, the backups from macro reflect for the computer side of things. And then also some monitoring software on there that is doing the same thing, email alerts. Not only just if it goes, even if it restarts, we'll, we'll get an alert because it ran an update or something like that, yep.
Same thing.
I guess I got a question, if, I hate to use worst-case scenarios, if someone came in and like took everything out of that office, how would it be replaced? Would that be under our insurance or would that be under?
That would be under us.
Your insurance.
That would be covered under our agreement under disaster recovery, so. And, so in this case, like you wouldn't own the firewall that we would put in place, right? That would be owned by CCI GuideStar, that's how you avoid the upfront hardware charge, right? You're basically just, in essence, you're almost renting the firewall while paying for us to manage the network as a service for you guys. In the event that anything happened to the firewall, that's us, you know, we replace that free of charge for you guys, cause it's our device.
Okay, and that's just.
Same thing, and I guess one thing I didn't mention is, in, in my quote, we're actually providing that network rack too. And so that could be a locked unit if you guys wanted a locked unit. I think I had mentioned that in the walkthrough, but typically we'll put an open one, but if, if it needs to be an enclosed locked unit where it's bolted to the wall and somebody's not gonna just come in there and snag it, you're gonna have to have more tools to, to get it off the wall. That's the, that's, there would be no, it's about the same price, there would be no change in a, in a price if, if it needs to be locked, it needs to be locked. Some of, some people have it, some people don't kind of thing, so.
Yeah, well, given it's a federal building, I, I think it would be foolish for someone to break in here. Okay. I'm, I'm happy, I guess.
Yeah, I have no questions now, you guys have done excellent.
Yeah, both of you.
Both of you.
Probably only.
I'm staggered.
Only understood eight percent of it, but.
Yeah.
So typically what, what you would do is, after they're, after they have left, then you guys can have a conversation about where you wanna go and if you have any additional questions, that sort of thing. The only thing I would suggest that you do is that you note, you did have one other respondent and what that was.
Oh, I did, yeah.
Just so that I can notify or have that in.
Yeah, this was from, from DS Tech.
Yeah, and I, yeah.
They provide us internet services now and, and, you know, we reached out to them as we reached out to, to every, everyone that we knew about. And they just, you know, one of these things that, if I can make one suggestion, would be to make sure your Microsoft three sixty-five environment is being backed up as well as the local PCs. This is a separate service from traditional backups, but arguably just as important. And I don't see that called out in this RFP. That was one suggestion, so DS Tech elected not to, not to submit a RFP.
That is a service we can provide to cloud-to-cloud backups.
Very common.
Yeah.
Very common, yeah.
Anybody's, yeah.
All right, and that, that's not includes RFP, but it's probably a similar rate, it's not a huge.
Yeah, it's.
Okay.
Obviously, it's pretty ubiquitous.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and, yeah, they just did, yeah, they took a pass just cause of the.
And you have support staff?
The.
Yes, yeah, yeah, I have three other people that would get dispatched kind of thing.
Okay. And you said yours is a large.
GuideStar's got like forty people, I'm not gonna pretend all of them are IT technicians, right? Cause you gotta have some project managers and account managers and stuff like that, but yeah. We've got, I wanna say about twenty techs, including remote guys and field guys. And then we just recently acquired that Solutions Tel building in Escondaba. And I was told by my VP, we've got two guys there right now and there are gonna be more guys in the future that'll be working from a field capacity out of that building.
You could very well give a call, this is what the hell is going on with this system?
Yeah, yeah.
It sounds like you're, you're both twenty-four seven.
Like I said, I'm from the call center, I'm used to that, so.
So one question I have, OMA, I don't think we ask people to leave, I think we just have to do this out in the open?
Oh, you can, I was just saying that you don't have to make a decision unless you want to make a decision. You can make a decision now, that's all I was saying. It's up to you guys what you wanna do.
We, we don't discuss this behind closed doors.
No.
Right?
I mean, from my perspective, it's polite to give you guys the ability to discuss it without me being.
But, but you know what, we're, we're a government body, so we're required, I mean, this is, this is for the world to see. It's a, it's a strange situation, I mean, it's just the way, it's the way the world works.
And I said, I've never, ever been anything where competing people are in the same room giving presentations.
Welcome to the government.
Welcome to the government.
And kind of helping each other out.
Yeah, yeah, no, and, and all I could say is like, oh man, I hate to make a decision, cause I just wanna sit here and say, can't you guys just like team up and, and get all the stuff done and?
Unfortunately.
Yeah, I get it, I get it, I get it.
Us all IT professionals, though, we're all the same type of people, so.
Yeah.
This is the most we've talked in a year.
Overbump.
It's true.
Oh, my goodness. So I don't, I don't think we go into closed session for deliberations, this is.
Oh, I wasn't suggesting closed session, that wasn't what I was suggesting. I was just suggesting that at some point you have to be done with questions and then, and, you know, conversation, because then you need to do your business and they can't be a part of that business.
That is correct, that's all I was saying.
So is there any more questions for these gentlemen?
No, no, not for me, not on my part.
Thank you both so much, you're, you're welcome to stay, I mean, cause hopefully we make.
As curious as I am, it's just I was raised to give people their privacy, I know it's gonna be out there, but.
It's gonna be archived.
There's just something in me that's just like, it doesn't feel right, you know?
You know, but, but it is right, it really, this is, this is a principle of government, is, these are, these are your dollars that we're spending in the community and, and, you know, all of us, we're all new to this board and we all ran on a, on a platform of total transparency. So I'm like a, you know, you can see right through me, so it's awkward. I believe in that politeness too, but you, but you have a right to, to be here and so exercise it. And there's also a chance for public comment afterwards.
Thank you, it was a pleasure.
Very nice. Get that truck back here, I think you're over your time. Let's see you guys take.
All right, thanks Josh, thank you.
Whether we sign or not, they'll all have to come back down for some more of those D and D stories.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
To tell you about the session that we had last night.
I really appreciate your time, Josh Tuvo, he's the shy one.
So nice to meet you.
Yeah, thank you, really appreciate it, so.
Be in touch or?
It'll probably be uploaded, so, but I will get, I'll get in touch with you.
You're not gonna ask my dad how he knows you?
Yeah, oh, your dad, he knows me from the college.
Oh, did you work at the college?
Yeah, I worked with the college, it's all right, yeah.
She's an IT.
Yeah.
That makes sense.
Yeah, yeah.
He'll find that funny, it's like he knows everybody, I swear.
Oh, yeah, he know, he and I know each other, yeah. He actually was in HR when I was hired.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Perfect.
All right, thank you very much.
Thanks so much.
Thank you so much, shake, yeah, take care, appreciate your time.
Okay.
Do what? We're still recording, right?
Yeah.
Okay, good. Yeah.
I've done a lot of government contracts, things have changed major over there, anything like that.
Let's see where the, where the governing body.
Bids and all that, I did bids for years.
But there's, there's different ways you can do it, like for instance, if it, if it was a bid, like a RFP, then they submit them and it's, and you just turn them in and then you walk away. And then you, as a board, have the discussion later, you have no input from, from the participants, but you can do, you can do it. I mean, there's many ways you can do it, you just have to be transparent.
I, I'm really glad they both came, I mean, clearly, it makes it easier to go through these two bids and look at, you know, bottom line price, right? And price compared to the services.
Each of us may have done this differently, I suspect we did. But I, I made a comparison chart as I was going along on each of the items on the quote. And I had noted that one through ten, one being the lowest, ten being the highest, as far as how I felt the service was being done in reading and in listening. And they came up pretty darn close, although there is a difference. And, and then of course, the, the value of monthly, that, that should also be in there.
Monthly what?
Their charge.
Oh, charge.
Charge for money.
Yeah, and, and since that was fixed, there was no reason to talk about that.
Yeah, exactly.
That's the.
But it's, it's just, it's just kind of, it's a part of, part of the whole.
What are the monthly fixed charges?
So the, the difference in.
Three twelve sixty-nine versus three seventy-one thirty-five.
I think that's.
If you guys need anything.
Can you shut that to me a little bit?
I can, yeah, I'm gonna be in the other room.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So the difference is, if I'm correct, fifty-eight sixty-six?
And then the difference being is the low one has the in-house device.
Yes.
I'm, my understanding from what I gleaned from this one, they have a backup which is actually not a, a physical device, but a, a system, am I correct in assuming, that's what I gleaned from it?
In another state.
Right.
Yeah, I think we're Virginia, right?
Yeah.
But I believe you said the, and I think I, I might be wrong on that. He had the ability to put in an onsite backup.
Yeah.
And that's, he, and he, and he said it, it was a, what was it, a three-two-one?
Yep, three copies, two devices, one offsite.
I, I think one of them.
And so that, that is onsite device.
We're, 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 I'm obviously in the dark, is that, how, how the hell do I evaluate whether Vland's is better than whatever their, you know, firewall system is, I, I don't, I don't know how to, I mean.
Well, yeah.
I mean, there's a little bit of.
And that's, and that's true.
Where was that, that worksheet? You know, I mean, the important thing is both, both bids.
This one, Joe?
No, no, this worksheet, that was.
Oh, that one. I think Chris took hers, she filled out.
Let me go get that, cause that.
Oh, no, really?
Oh, I didn't use that, I probably should've.
No, no, it's okay, she did it for us, so.
So they checked the boxes.
Yeah, what, what, I think I asked you this question once before, what were we paying monthly to DS Tech as up until this point?
One fifty-six a month.
One fifty-six.
But that didn't include in, in the service.
So.
Right.
And then just to justify the doubling of the cost is, well, you're doubling the cost of what we were paying out to DS Tech versus now, the added items that we're getting are, you know, necessities to us?
Are actually the things that we need.
Right, okay, that's just so we're, just so I'm clear, that's.
To me it is, I mean, you know, we lost, we lost email accounts, we lost.
We were woefully under.
We didn't have that, I mean, we lost email accounts.
I don't know, I'm saying. We, we can justify the.
That was because of negligence, wasn't it?
Well, no, it's negligence, so.
Remember, network security is all about, yeah, I mean, so, so you have external threats and then potentially internal threats, so.
Well, as long as we, as long as we have that, you know, he gave that three-year, I, I, I mean, I, I personally don't like walking into a five-year thing with somebody. You know, five-year agreement, unless I got an out.
The other thing we didn't look, I didn't ask him, the three-year contract with this fellow here, we can get out of it with a ninety-day notice at any point.
Yeah.
What, what, with the other guys, are we locked in for a?
You know what? No, he said after three years.
He said three years.
Three years, but.
So I think.
You, this one here, we're looking at, we could get out of it in ninety days.
Right, but there's a difference in upfront cost, right? You're, you're paying for, you're paying for, you're paying thirteen thousand three hundred and sixty-eight dollars and sixty cents to deba- to basically buy this equipment, right?
Over thirty-six months, yes, I understand that, is that right? Yeah, it, thirty-six months divided by three seventy-one, or three seventy-one divided by, or thirteen thousand three sixty-eight sixty divided by three seventy-one thirty-five is thirty-six, that gives you per month.
Okay.
So the other one is, he didn't give you a total cost on, on the, the hardware and service, but he has broken down to.
Because you don't pay for the?
You don't, neither one of them, either one of them, you don't pay, we don't pay thirteen thousand dollars upfront on this one either.
No.
We paid, we paid three seventy-one a month, so.
But they're both, but is, but I think there's a difference because with, with GuideStar, we're using the equipment we already have on-site, so if something fails, we have to replace that.
What is he, what is he replacing, that's what I didn't understand.
He's gonna.
Replace all.
From what I heard, it.
Everything.
Everything.
So he's gonna come in and replace all our hard drives, all our computers?
No, 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 no. Just the network stuff.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, okay, so he's putting all new network stuff, so you don't need to, you don't need to worry about the GuideStar switch or whatever being almost at the end?
That was, that was my understanding. That he's, he's telling you what hardware you have. That he's, he's telling you what hardware you have.
I um, as I was saying, I, I was doing a one-to-ten comparison on it.
Yeah.
And totals that I got were um, CCI. Total on on my evaluation, what I was listening to and what I read. CCI came out at fifty-five on my. Comparison.
Okay.
Out of a total of sixty.
Endless business solution.
Endless actually came out at sixty.
Oh, so higher.
He he, he tagged every one of them.
Okay, yeah, I, I thought they were very comparable, it's just.
Very minor.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
But I had, that's how I had to, that's how I had to do it.
So with this one, he's gonna work with our networking equipment we have in place now, and if it fails, he's, it is. He'll replace it or will have to replace it?
I was under the impression that if it, that, yeah, that we re- we replace, we would replace that.
And then, this one over here, he's gonna replace everything we, when, if he would be successful, they, this company would replace. All the networking equipment with new equipment.
It says brand-new equipment every five years.
Every, it's a, it has a guarantee for five years, so.
Yeah, so it's guaranteed. So he's not really out, they're not out anything.
Right, he's, right, except for the initial cost of installation and.
And assuming he is gonna put all new stuff in that.
It says actual travels expenses to be determined, the customer will be billed for actual travel expenses incurred. During the walkthrough, this company is based in Iron Mountain?
But they just are opening an Eskenaba store.
Where did, is, whi- which one was Josh, this one here? Where did he come, where did you, where did he come from?
He's from Eskenaba.
But where was, where did he work previously before, he, cause he started this company?
Bay College, and he still works at the ISD.
Oh, okay.
So, so I, I know Josh, I knew Josh because uh, that he worked at Bay College, and then he left Bay College and, and worked at the ISD.
I don't, I don't like the idea of not being able to get out of something though, if I had to in a year, you know, penalty.
Well, the, the um, GuideStar is, you make up your mind within the first ninety days. And after ninety days. Then you're locked in?
You're in.
No, no, not not at all, it says, it says a ninety-day notice required for termination, then that, that would be at any period. You could go three years and then decide you.
You know, I read that also, cause I asked him point blank, and that's what he told me, okay.
Says ninety-day notice required for termination. Yeah, and I asked him, that my question, I said, would, this is what it means, yeah, he said, at any time, you give us ninety-day uh, uh.
I thought, I thought I heard him say, within the first ninety days.
When he was stating it, he said, we can go, within the first ninety days, if you wanna terminate, you can terminate it. Or any, any, all you, all we have to do is give them ninety-day notice for termination. Yeah, that's the only thing when you're tied in for five years.
Required for termination, right?
I would go a hundred percent this way, right now, if it wasn't tied to five total years. It's the only drawback I have on, and I'm not saying it's a deal break. With the option. No, this one's tied to, this is a five-year contract.
It's a five-year contract, it's a, a three-year out and a two-year option.
Okay, but this one, he's giving you uh, ninety days, you, we just have to give him, we could go two years and give him a ninety-day notice and, and 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 opt out.
Right, but. But but they both said, and I heard this drawing, it's like the ne- the standard, like both is like between a three and five-year commitment. Because of changes of equipment, like you don't.
Right, but what I'm trying to tell you, what Glenn and I are trying to say here is, with this one here, we're, we're tied in.
Right.
This guy here, we can get out of it inside of three years, we just have to give a ninety-day notice.
Sure, but you, what are the implications of getting out of that, you've bought equipment, and then you have to find a new person to come in. And adapt to whatever you have there, and then start the quote all over again, so.
No, I, yeah, that, I I understand that's a limitation, it's just something I didn't.
I mean, this.
I wished he would have, would have had the same thing in there.
An opt-out.
An opt-out, yeah, he's gotta have an opt-out, but, you know, his opt-out is three years, that's what he's telling us, you can go out in three years. I did, I was asking, so are you gonna notify us when, when, after years, uh, cause like I told him, I'm serious, we might not be here.
Oh, yeah. I guarantee one person won't be here.
Well, we're not gonna be here, but the district will still be there.
Oh, yeah. We're not setting up the incoming people.
Very few businesses send you ticklers to say your, your time is, you know.
I mean, the way, the way I would reflect on that is, you know, we just signed up for uh, Highline, right? So in order to get a new internet provider, we would have to bring in a new fiber optic or, you know what I mean, it's just like. These, these things don't.
So what, what, what's uh, there's fifty bucks difference, um.
Wait a minute, hold on.
I can't speak to the equipment.
No, me neither.
And I can't speak to that backup that he's using dip versus other backup, and um, I'm, I'm.
I like the idea that he's local.
He's here, yeah. How, what, how long do you, how long has he been with Bay, how long you do Bay stuff?
I don't, I don't recall. Let me work, yeah, I work at the ISD now too.
It is, or, one thing.
Something important, I think, cause we haven't really vetted this, is, so it's fifty-eight sixty-six difference. So annually, the difference in the quote is seven hundred and three dollars.
A year?
And ninety-two cents, and if you multiply that by three years, that difference is. Twenty-one eleven seventy-six and seven oh three ninety-two times. Five, that difference would be thirty-five hundred dollars. So the difference in service over. A three-year period would be two thousand one hundred and eleven, and over a five-year period looks like thirty-five nineteen. And six, so.
Well, the other thing you gotta factor in there also is, um, any equipment failures. Between now and the end of five years here, will be replaced at no cost to us.
Yeah.
That is correct.
Here, we'll have to replace it. At a cost.
I, I don't know what merits this has to it, but I kinda like that, and maybe they're both doing it, and it's a, this deep packet inspection thing. So that they go in and and they figure it out where it might be there, that sounded kind of.
That's the, that's the firewall.
Yeah. Well, this is a different thing, that they said, that they said they go in and they compartmentalize.
It's still at the firewall.
It's a firewall, okay.
I mean, both, I, I would, I mean, to me, I would trust either one, that's.
Oh, yeah, I I hundred percent trust either one, if I were, if I were leaning here, I would almost lean with Josh. At at this point, for the simple reason of the points of, um, it's, it's actually a money savings for us. It adds up, it's an equipment saving for us if we have, because we all all know electronically with equipment fails. Um, for future, we're not gonna have to worry about the equipment, um, and and they're local, even though they're both gonna have.
It just sounds like this is a pretty much a standard, yeah, I, cause when Rachel, we just, we asked her, nobody, nobody else is doing this.
No, nobody.
Except backing up, and I think, I think what they're doing is they're backing up, taking them offsite.
I gotta. Yeah, cause she sent us an email of the, the.
I gotta call for the vote.
Oh, no, 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 I'm, hold on, hold on, wait on. I'm gonna do one more thing before we do that, if you don't mind. I'm sorry, you got someplace to be?
Yep, me too.
All right, well, let me just, so it's, I wanted.
You do that, we're gonna table it.
I wanna put it, we can't table, we need to move forward.
Well, then.
Yeah, there's an, so give me a second here, um, I was just looking, so one is three twelve sixty-nine, which is thirty-seven fifty-two a year. And three seven one thirty-five times twelve is four thousand four hundred and fifty-six. And I, and I know that last year we spent. Was it about thirty-nine hundred?
Don't look at me.
Yeah, thirty-nine hundred.
And that, that's with all the extra stuff that DS Tech went.
No, DS Tech did not provide the extra stuff, they, they were just firewall and virus protection.
Well, where'd the extra costs come from?
What extra co- with DS Tech?
Yeah.
It was all the, the service, all the service with computers went down and putting in service stuff, yeah. And this printer doesn't work and that, the integration, so.
We wanna have this thing locked in, locked in a box here? I think so, I, he didn't really indicate that was gonna be a lot, any more money.
No.
Yeah, lock it, lock it up then.
Well, the easy way to, and that's not a right choice of words, but, um, based on the, the fact that. Endless.
EBS.
Yes, is thirty-seven fifty-two a month, a, a year, I'm sorry, and.
For.
CCI is forty-four fifty-six. I'm going with the um, the value.
It's just lower price, I think the value.
I would.
Yeah.
I would consider.
Well, this is what we're going on, guys, cause, be honest with you, if you're honest, we're not totally educated on all the mechanisms that.
Oh, don't even, don't even scratch the surface.
Yeah, yeah.
Well.
So, so do you wanna put it up for a, do we wanna do a roll call vote?
There is, we gotta make a motion and then have a second.
Make a motion.
Okay, I'll, I'll make, I'll make a motion that we award our um, IT to endless business solution. Which is Josh, am I correct? Right here.
That is correct.
Josh Blumford.
And I'll support that.
Nate?
Oh, yeah, so if this all goes south, I'm gonna be the fall guy here.
You got big shoulders.
We're, we're heading north, buddy.
Where you guys going?
What?
Where you guys going?
No, I'm just saying, the, the districts going north on our ISD, I mean, this, and you know, the other important thing, um, is they both. Made commitments to have this implemented between January twenty-sixth and February ninth.
Right, so that's timely manner. Both of them were good on that.
They were both good.
Yeah, 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 that was the RFP, we didn't talk about it, but they, you know, during the walkthrough, I, I was, I brought it up, cause I said, hey, you've got a new person started. All right. Motion and second, any other discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
I just call roll call.
Oh, Sagorsky?
Yes.
Brockman?
Yes.
Bande Water?
Yes.
I'm on board too. Beautiful. Hey, just like the old days, general public comment? There's no public. Here, board member comments.
Relative to this?
Relative to anything, you're a board member.
Okay, um.
Just don't do business, right? I'm just saying it's comments, not, we just, as long as we don't do business, we're fine.
That is correct.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I'll talk to you then afterwards about the getting together of the group, that's not business.
No, no, go, what, what do you, yeah.
The, the whole group, remember I wanna do a luncheon thing?
Oh, yeah, yeah, for sure.
Yeah, so I, we wanna do a luncheon here, the board and all the staff and the new manager. Um, I just talked to the woman in uh, uh, Masaki yesterday again, and, and I says, okay, what about it? You guys have done these things, she said, yes, and what we did, and I told her about our situation, she said. Put it as a public notice regardless, that we're gonna do this, you're not gonna provide everyone lunch, it comes, it wants public, it comes. The lunch is for us, but it has to, she said, do a public notice, keep it transparent then, she's even though you're not, you're not gonna be discussing business whatsoever. But she says, just do it, I said, okay.
Okay, for OMA.
That's correct.
All right.
So, um, I will ask these folks when they could be available, which, which soon she comes on board and say.
And maybe, do you want her, do you want Heather just facilitate and then report back to us?
Yeah, she could, she could.
Yeah.
Find out if anyone has uh, uh, food.
Well, then I, what we're gonna do is, we're gonna get ball balloons, I thought, and I'll pick it up when I come up here. Have them make the food coming up, you know, anyone, yeah, does that seem reasonable?
There you go.
I'd like to do it right away.
Yeah.
Well, sooner the better, I think we, cause we, we've, we've been talking about this since we came on board as a board.
First week, when you get back when?
I don't, I don't know, I'll let you know. Go, go on to Arizona.
Arizona, there's nothing in Arizona but snakes and scorpions and rocks. And my daughter.
Less than a week. Can we stick to board comments, not what Joe's doing next week?
No, but you'll be back in time to do a public notice, is my point, eighteen hours?
Sure, yeah, I mean, poor Heather could do that, that's gonna be her job. Well, I'll ex, I will, I will explain OMA and then, yeah.
I have no, I have no comments.
That is a, that's a manager thing.
No, I don't, I don't, she's.
And she should have a little bit of background on it anyway.
I will, she'll get plenty, yeah, yeah.
I'll just need to get a credit card, pay for it.
You, she needs to do it, because she's the manager, if we do it, we have to approve it. So let her, let her do that, she's, manager can spend money, board can't, unless we approve it, so.
Yeah, it's true.
Thanks, yeah. That's an easy buildup, so.
Yeah.
Any uh, board comments for you?
None for me.
Who, all I say is, uh, I really appreciate uh, the three responses and all the guidance these uh.
So why do you, why do you think DS Tech never?
You know, it just said that, I think they were listed, it's a follow-up one. About, no, we're not adjourned. It's one of those things of compliance, oh no, this is the wrong one, I think it was just cost, their cost would have been, would have been higher. Based on the last meeting when Josh came in and talked about it, and we decided, hey, because of such a long commitment, we gave, but I think. We might have mentioned what the numbers were, so that's why I went to open bid, and DS Tech just, so they, the, that, that price. Isn't anything that they would, they were interested in competing with.
Well, my understanding is there's not a lot of the municipalities in Delta County anymore that are signed on to DS Tech.
I don't know.
Well, I understand the sheriff's department's not.
I don't know, I mean, this is, yeah, yeah.
The city isn't anymore?
Yeah, I, it's not our business, so.
Yeah.
Comments, uh, can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Are we good? All right, we'll call it at five twenty-nine, thank you, gentlemen.
I got one minute to get to Riverside.
Go get it.
In a new truck.
All right, don't talk business, the three of you on the way out, thank you.
See you later, Joe.
Yeah, thanks a lot, Mike.
Hey, if I don't talk to you, enjoy your uh, trip down there, I've been, I think I'm going also.
Okay.
Not right now, but pretty quick, two seconds.
Are you ready?